Good afternoon and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's April 7, 2022, open session. First, Ms. Costa, could you please take the role?
Yes, Commissioner Cozart.
Present.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner McMahon. I'll come back and check. Commissioner May?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo?
I'm here.
Thank you. Chair White?
Here.
Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon? Commissioner Dixon? Thank you. Commissioner Cash?
Present.
Thank you.
And I am here. Dixon's here.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Thank you. And I'm just going to circle back to see if Commissioner McMahon has joined us. I know he's he'll probably join us in a brief moment or two, so. Thank you. I will note that Marcel Acosta, the Executive Director, Anne Skyler, the General Counsel, Mike Sherman with the Planning and Research Division, and Diane Sullivan with the Urban Design and Plan Review Division are also in the meeting.
While noting the presence of a quorum, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today's meeting is live streamed and will be available in a few days as a video on NCPC's website. If there is no objection, the updated agenda as posted is adopted as the order of business. We will now play a short video clip of the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
NCPC's offices are currently under renovation, so NCPC will continue to conduct its meetings online until this work is complete. We are also continuing to monitor public health requirements for in-person meetings, and I want to share how we will be conducting commission business. When commissioners wish to be recognized, they should unmute and request to be recognized. During commission deliberations, I will use a round robin format to ask each commissioner if they have any comments. As a reminder, during deliberations, all commissioners should be on video during that time unless you are experiencing technical difficulty. The next item is the report of the chair. And today, I cannot help but reflect on how special and how fragile our everyday lives are. Just a few months ago, the people of Ukraine were likely thinking about what was happening at their jobs, at their commission meetings, what was for dinner, anticipating meeting friends at a cafe. Today, they see city streets and homes in ruins, and friends, families, and colleagues are suddenly soldiers, refugees, or war casualties. Our thoughts are with the people of Ukraine today and with everyone in places of conflict and displacement. Our next agenda item is the report of the Executive Director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon. We have scheduled three virtual public meetings on the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative Concepts. These meetings are scheduled for Wednesday, April 13 at noon, Tuesday, April 26 at 7:00 p.m., and Saturday, May 21 at 10:00 a.m. Further information can be found on our website. The public is certainly invited to attend, and we hope you all can make it. I'd like to introduce two new colleagues who have joined the agency. Jeff Jamowat joined the Physical Planning Division. He recently worked for the Golden Triangle and Capitol Riverfront Business Improvement Districts. Jeff also spent four years as a program associate at the Bears Institute on City Design. Received a dual master's degree in city planning and real estate development from MIT. Jeff will work on the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative and Monumental Core Street State Projects. Welcome, Jeff. Could you turn on your camera?
Well, thank you, myself. Good afternoon, Commissioner. I'm delighted and humbled to join NCPC and look forward to working with everyone.
Great. Thanks so much, Jeff. We also have Brittany Drakeford. Brittany comes to NCPC Policy Research Division from Prince George's County, where she served as a special assistant to the planning director. Brittany also worked as a seizure planner for the county. She's completing her doctoral degree in urban and regional planning and design at the University of Maryland. Brittany will work on the comprehensive plan workplace element update and the Beyond Granted Initiative. Welcome, Brittany. Am I turning your camera on?
Thank you, Marcel, and thank you. I'm excited to be with you all today.
Great. Well, welcome aboard, and please join me in welcoming Brittany and Jeff to NCPC. You do have my written report in your packets, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Acosta, and welcome, Jeff and Brittany. We're excited to have you join the team. Do the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Acosta? Hearing none, we will move to the agenda item of our legislative update, number four, from Ms. Skyler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a report today. I have two items. The first is House of Representatives Bill 7075, which is entitled "The Ukrainian Independence Park Act of 2022." And I'd like to, at this point, thank Commissioner May for bringing this to my attention. This particular bill designates the appropriate approximate triangle formed by 22nd Street Northwest to the East, P Street Northwest to the South, and Florida Avenue Northwest to the West in Washington DC, which includes Reservation 57D and Reservation 360, and the portion of property containing the Tarashevchenko, I'm sorry, Shevchenko, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that correctly, memorial, and renamed it "The Ukrainian Independence Park." It provides the Secretary of Interior discretionary authority to post signs on or near Ukrainian Independence Park that include information on the importance of Ukraine's independence, freedom, sovereignty, and the solidarity between the people of Ukraine and the United States. The bill was introduced in the House on March 15 and was referred to the House Committee on Natural Resources. The second piece of legislation I'd like to report upon is House of Representatives Bill 1175. This bill is entitled "The Smithsonian and National Gallery of Art Collections Space Authorization Act." This authorizes the Board of Regents of the Smithsonian Institute and the Board of Trustees of the National Gallery of Art to construct and use a collection storage space at the museum support facility of the Smithsonian Institution in Sutland, Maryland. The facility will accommodate the care, preservation, conservation, storage, and study of national collections held in trust by both the Smithsonian Institution and the National Gallery of Art. Bill was introduced in the House on February 15 and has been referred to a committee and subcommittee. This concludes my report, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Skyler. Does the commission have any questions for Ms. Skyler? Thank you. Agenda item five is the consent calendar. There are two items on this month's consent calendar. The first is for approval of preliminary and final site development plans for the National Zoological Park Bus Lot Security Guns and Access Modifications. This project was submitted by the Smithsonian Institution. The second item is for approval of comments to the mayor on the District of Columbia Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal years 2023 to 2028. This was submitted by the District of Columbia Office of the City Administrator. Are there any questions or discussion on the consent calendar items? Hearing none, is there? Oops, I am so sorry, Commissioner Cozart. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out an item, the item related to the capital improvements plan, that this is part of a budget that the mayor was very excited to submit to the council. And in Mayor Bowser's budget, there are important priorities related to capital investments around housing affordability, around resilience and sustainability, parks and recreation facilities, safety improvements related to transportation, and modernization of school facilities, very important priorities that are underscored in the recently adopted comprehensive plan, and it helps to advance that vision for an inclusive city. And that capital improvements plan is very important to it. So I just wanted to add that as a comment, not looking to pull this off of the consent agenda, but wanted to make sure that important context was conveyed so that commissioners who care deeply about the comprehensive plan, and some of whom have it in their background, are fully aware of that.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the important context of those priorities, and we will note that. Does anyone else have any comments or questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Commissioner McMahon, so moved.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Is there a second?
Second, Commissioner Wright.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Ms. Costa, can you please confirm the motion and the second, and take the vote by roll call?
Certainly, the motion was made by Commissioner McMahon, who joined the meeting, and the second was by Commissioner Wright. And with that, Commissioner Cozart? Commissioner Cozart, would you like to vote?
Well, I guess you didn't hear me. I.
Oh, great. Thank you. Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
Thank you. The motion has carried. Next, we have an information presentation. Agenda item 6A is a presentation on the federal workplace element, which is part of the comprehensive plan for the national capital. And today, we'll be hearing from Ms. Dupont.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Today, I'll be providing you an information presentation on the federal workplace element. Following my presentation, the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments will share current economic trends in the region and their planning efforts to update the region's cooperative forecast. Our commission last adopted the federal workplace element in 2016. In 2019, the commission released the draft update to the element for public comment. Following that update, the pandemic emerged and resulted in immediate changes to the federal workplace. Because of the unknown long-term implications on the workplace in March of 2021, the commission decided to defer action on further changes to the element, and only approved amendments to the boundary and definition of the central employment area to reflect NCPC and the district's joint effort to make the boundary and definition consistent in both the federal and district elements. Since last year, we've been studying the potential long-term impacts of the pandemic on the workplace and monitoring changes to federal telework and the demand for office space. Today, we will provide you an overview of our research and our scenario planning efforts for the federal workplace element. As a reminder, the federal workplace element provides policy guidance to improve the operational efficiency and productivity for the planning, location, design, and operation of federal workplaces. The 2019 draft considered trends and major drivers reshaping the federal government's footprint and influencing development in the region. However, it did not consider the impacts of the pandemic. The pandemic forced changes to the workplace. Since March of 2020, a significant percentage of the region's federal workforce worked from home. Two years later, we're finally at a point where federal agencies are slowly returning to the office, but many to a hybrid work environment. The pandemic has accelerated the trends in telework and remote work, and permanently changing the way the federal government works. Given the uncertainty of how much telework and remote work agencies will adopt in the long term, as part of the element update, NCPC decided to consider scenario planning to help identify a range of potential outcomes and impacts. To help with this effort, NCPC will partner with COG in the upcoming year to explore a scenario planning initiative to better understand the cumulative impact of federal telework and hybrid workplaces on a region. This initiative will convene a panel of experts, include facilitated discussions with stakeholders to help identify future scenarios that will be considered for subsequent targeted research. This research may be conducted by consultants as needed. We'll study the use of telework and analyze how that may impact office demand, the federal footprint, the transportation network, and federal procurement. Each scenario will be analyzed through the lens of impacts on climate and equity. In the next few slides, I'll highlight these focus areas and the questions we will study. The federal government is the largest single employer in the region. In 2020, the federal workforce was 12% of the total region's workforce. And if you factor in federal contractors, approximately a quarter of the region's workforce is federally related. 3% of federal employees telework daily before the pandemic. This increased to 45% during the pandemic. So as part of the study, we'll continue to monitor how federal agencies are considering telework and remote work as the workforce re-enters the physical workplace. Questions we'll study include what is the demand for telework as federal agencies return, what type of federal jobs have the potential to telework and/or work remotely, and where are these jobs concentrated in the region? The federal government is the single largest owner and occupant of real property in the region. Changes to the federal real estate can have a significant impact on the region. Before the pandemic, agencies were already prioritizing consolidation of offices and moving workers from leased to federally owned space. At last month's commission meeting on the Port Belvoir North area, we heard DOD's plans to consolidate out of leased facilities across the national capital region into federally owned space over the next decade. And as of last month, there are approximately 484 total GSA leases in the region, with 60% of the leases set to expire in the next five years. So why does this matter? This just shows us that in the near term, many federal agencies will need to reevaluate their space needs and decide whether to remain in federally leased space or relocate in federally owned, which is of large interest to many jurisdictions. So questions we'll study include how will federal telework and remote work redefine employee space requirements? What is the federal government's demand for office space? How will this impact the federal footprint, federal office leases, and federal location decisions, including the central employment area, central business areas, and COG's equity emphasis areas? The federal government is a significant contributor to the trends related to the region's transportation and environmental stewardship. Currently, more than half of all Metro Rail stations serve federal facilities. Before the pandemic, approximately 1/3 of Metro Rail peak period commuters were federal employees. And then earlier this year, Metro Rail ridership was 20% of pre-pandemic levels on weekdays. So the use of telework and remote work will have consequences to commuting patterns and the region's transportation network. Already seeing these changes as federal agencies update their master plan. For example, last year, the commission approved the Goddard Space Flight Center Master Plan. They plan to reduce the number of facilities by 25%, as well as their amount of parking. They plan to decrease their single occupancy vehicle commuting, which will be offset by increasing the number of employees teleworking from an existing 0.4% to a proposed 40%. So our study will consider how would federal telework impact the transportation network, transit ridership, as well as roadway traffic, and change the region's greenhouse gas emissions? Lastly, federal procurement is one of the most important forces shaping the region's economy. This includes federal spending on acquiring goods and services like design and construction of buildings, building rent and utilities, contracting services, and all other essential workplace items. In 2017, the federal government accounted for approximately 30% of the Washington region's economy, which included $78 billion for federal procurement. The workplace may require investment to modernize or renovate existing federal buildings in the future to address changes in office space needs. So our study will consider how would federal procurement changes impact the region's economy and office space? Our next steps for this initiative is to finalize a proposal with COG before we start the expert panel discussion and targeted research later this year. NCPC then will summarize the analysis in a key findings report. That will be a framework for NCPC, COG, and regional planning directors to make more effective decisions as they consider potential impacts of the future scenarios. Our goal is for this to be helpful for jurisdictions, for all of us to have a common understanding of the issues and problems. This study will help inform updates to the federal workplace element, which we plan to update and bring back to the commission next year. We'll continue to update the commission throughout this study. Next, I would like to introduce Paul DeJardin, who is COG's Director of the Department of Community Planning and Services. Paul is responsible for directing COG's technical and policy work in regional planning and land use, regional economic analysis and demographic forecasting, affordable housing and homelessness, public health and foster care child welfare. He'll provide us information on how COG is forecasting growth in the region, which will help inform our scenario planning efforts.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Angela, and members of the commission. I'm very pleased to be here with you. It's been several years, but I'm very, very pleased to be back. I hope my comments will complement what Angela has mentioned. We're very, very excited about the opportunity to work with NCPC again. COG and NCPC have worked very, very closely on a number of different program areas over the years, and I've been privileged to work with a number of the key staff on some very focused issues and program areas. So again, very excited to be here and hope that the remarks I share with you will again enhance what you've just heard from Angela. Next slide, please. We're going to jump in very quickly and focus. I should say that the presentation I'm giving to you all this afternoon, I've also had the privilege of presenting to the Transportation Planning Board at COG and also to the Montgomery County Council. So again, really trying to seed a conversation about the future of the region. What you're looking at here is a schematic of our forecasting process at COG. This is something that our region's planning directors established in the 1970s to come up with a consistent set of growth projections for local and regional planning. Just call your attention to how the process works. In the upper left-hand corner, we have an econometric model that determines what is the maximum amount of growth we realistically think from an economic standpoint the region would be seeing over the next 25 or 30 years. The lower-left corner, the strength of the process, are the projections that actually come from the local governments. In the near term, as you see from permitting, site review, where projects are actually going forward as we speak, and then guided over the long term by comprehensive and small area plans. We reconcile those forecasts, and then the most significant part of this process is the smaller area projections that go to serve a host of complex transportation models, air quality models, water supply, a range of very technical needs that are widely used. Forecasts are also used locally for capital improvements planning for schools, hospitals, any sort of needs like that. Next slide, please. Very quickly, what do the most recent forecasts show? As you see, we would add about 880,000 jobs over the next 25 years or so, about 1.3 million people, and about 500,000 households. So we are still expecting fairly significant growth on top of the base that does in fact exist. Next slide, please. This slide shows for employment, where and the amount of growth that is currently anticipated in the forecast. The forecasts were arrayed based on the largest number of jobs in the region in 2020, which is the District of Columbia, followed by Fairfax, Montgomery, and so forth, as you continue down through the list. The lighter portion of each of those bars shows the number of jobs in 2020, and then the darker portion, the dark red, if you will, shows the increment of growth that's expected over the next 25 years. Again, you can see the relative rates of growth with the district continuing to be the center of the greatest number of jobs throughout the region, but followed very closely by Fairfax. Something I would point out, and again, you can see in the relative, the relationships, if you will, between the dark red and the lighter portion of the bars. We spend a lot of time at the Council of Governments, visioning and looking at the future and alternative scenarios. And something that we're always very mindful of, and what's seen in these forecasts, is that 80% of the future, 80% of 2045 is already on the ground now. So our ability as planners to influence the future really is constrained by that dark red portion that you see there. Next slide, please. This is obviously the companion to the prior slide. This is the residential forecast, the household projections for the same time period, again, arrayed the same way with Fairfax having the greatest number of housing units in 2021, followed again by Montgomery, Prince George's, and throughout the remainder of the region. Again, the same pattern where the darker portion of the bar shows the amount of growth in housing units that's expected over the next 25 years. Again, commensurate with what I mentioned before about the income projections, about 80% of the 2045 household, the residential pattern that we expect in 2045, 80% of that is already on the ground now. And that blue portion of each of those bars, the dark blue, is the portion that we can really focus on trying to influence in our planning initiatives. Next slide, please. So I'd like to pivot now, as Angela said, to really a snapshot of where things are now in our region's economy. What you're looking at here is a slide that goes back to December of 2019, immediately prior to the pandemic, the number of jobs in the region, and then continuing to the most recent period on the far right-hand side, February of this year. Point out to you that dramatic plunge between March and April of 2020 with the onset of the pandemic. We lost 373,000 jobs, as you can see. It's the greatest loss in employment in this region in any one-month period that we have ever experienced. To the far right, again, you can see we have recovered up to a bit more than 3.2 million jobs, or about 98% of the jobs that we had in the region in 2020. So again, we are basically back to where we had been. We have recovered, but what you'll see is the unevenness of that. Next slide, please. This slide shows, again, picking up on the prior slide showing total jobs. This is a breakdown of employment change between March and April 2020 as the pandemic hit across all the sectors, and what you can clearly see, every job sector in the region lost employment in that one-month period. The most obvious, the most prevalent are those bars towards the center, leisure and hospitality, followed by retail, and then some of the other services, educational and health services. Folks often ask, what do I mean by that? Daycare centers, childcare centers. We all remember two years ago when things literally, literally shut down. It was as if someone had pulled the floor out from beneath us. Next slide, please. So I mentioned before, we have recovered. We're at about 98% of employment as it was in March of 2020. This bar, or this chart, rather, shows how job sectors have recovered across the spectrum. Again, we're still short about 35,000 fewer leisure and hospitality jobs, and about 25,000 fewer retail jobs, with things changing, as we are well aware of. Next slide, please. Something we also track at the Council of Governments, this is data from CoStar. We look at subregional office markets, and I'll talk about construction in a moment, but this is looking at vacancy rates for the fourth quarters of 2019, 20, and 21. As you can see, vacancy rates during that period, that three-year period, increased throughout with the most rapid increases during calendar year 2021. Northern Virginia experienced the highest vacancy rates, 16.5% vacancy rate region, or I'm sorry, throughout the northern region, the subregion, but several markets throughout Metropolitan Washington have consistently had much higher vacancy rates than that. Next slide, please. Something we have been tracking for some time at the Council of Governments, and it is, as you can see from this particular slide, has been getting a good deal of press as an indicator, if you will, of office occupancy. Castle Systems is actually a local firm. They're based in Arlington, and they provide building security services in the sense that they have the little electronic key cards that you use to access an office or go into a secure area. You swipe it, and you gain access. They're also the firm that owns the castles, the women's tennis for, or tennis team, rather, here in the district. Next slide, please. But this slide is showing, based on the Castle Systems data, is office occupancy trends, really going back just the last six months or so. Again, there's data available for much longer time period, but showing in red, our But showing in red, our return to office rate, if you will, compared to the blue bars, which are for the nation, the ten major metropolitan areas in the country. Again, you can see that massive drop-off just at the end of the year when the Omicron variant hit. We were up to about a thirty-six to thirty-seven percent office fake, or office occupancy rate. We have begun the slow return, but most significantly, for this region as a whole, we are always about two to three points below the average of the ten major metropolitan areas, consistently ranking really only number three or number four from the bottom of all those ten metropolitan areas. Next slide, please. I mentioned before that we track commercial construction. This is a slide going back the last thirty years or so, showing construction throughout metropolitan Washington by different structure types, offices in purple, the orange for retail and so forth. Would point out just to the left of this, the, I believe it's nineteen eighty-seven, if memory serves me, was the year that we produced the greatest amount of space in this region. But as you can see, nineteen ninety was clearly a peak. In 2021, we actually produced about eleven million square feet of space across the region. One thing I would point out to you, again, the fact that the trend for commercial space has been declining over the last twenty years or so, I would also call to your attention how the share of office construction, the purple areas shaded in at the bottom of the charts, has declined over time as well. And there is an increase in that turquoise or teal-colored share of other space, which includes a host of things like data centers. Next slide, please. I mention data centers because they are increasingly interesting point for commercial construction throughout this region. This is a slide from our most recent summary report for 2020, describing, again, or I'm sorry, showing, rather, the location of major projects. The red circles, graduated circles by size show the projects that were completed in 2020. The beige areas show the universe of all other projects that were completed before 2020. Again, as the slide says, office construction was actually the single largest source of new space during 2020. But again, the prevalence or the increasing prevalence, particularly in some of the far suburban jurisdictions of industrial flex-based data centers. Next slide, please. Pivoting to some of the other indicators we track in economic trends, what you're looking at here is a slide showing roadway traffic volumes throughout the region, again, beginning prior to the pandemic, and then through the most recent period, the data is available in December. So that second bar on the left-hand side, that was for, or the series of bars, I should say, on the left-hand side, are for calendar year 2020 through February of 21. What you can clearly see is highway volumes were less than half between March and April. April was less than half of what highway volumes had been in the prior year, 2019. By December, on the right-hand side, for December of 2021, we're back to about ninety-five percent of highway traffic volumes compared to where December of 2019 volumes were. Next slide, please. We also work very closely with WAMADA. What you're looking at here is a chart comparing metro rail ridership in blue and metro bus ridership in orange. Again, going back to January of last year, what you can see again is the disparity, but also on the right-hand side, that metro rail ridership most recently is only about thirty percent of prior pandemic ridership levels in 2019 metro bus, at about two-thirds of prior ridership levels. Next slide, please. COG is also the host to the National Capital Transportation Planning Board, the TPB. And in 2021, the Transportation Planning Board commissioned a survey of about three thousand households in the region called Voices of the Region. And what you're looking at here is the results of one of those questions that was posed to householders. And it's a chart of what are the preferences of teleworkers? And, and what you can clearly see is nearly two-thirds, sixty-five percent of all of the households that responded said that they would prefer to continue to telework at some level going forward. More than a quarter, twenty-six percent said they would really like to telework full-time going forward. And less than ten percent, about one out of every eleven, said, no, I really want to return to work full-time. So very insightful view into the pulse of workers thinking on this topic, if you will. Next slide, please. COG also works very closely with George Mason University, the Stephen Fuller Institute. What you're looking at here is the results of a survey that they commissioned with Washington Post last summer. It's a bit dated, the timing, if you will. But I would also assert that this is probably a fairly good indicator of the current mindset of many workers in that if we all think back to last summer, we were all fully vaccinated, we thought things were reopening, we were going back to a level of normalcy. What you're looking at, again, across different age categories, is workers' preferences about returning to the office. So the light blue portion of the bar shows workers who said that they would mostly like to be back in work on a daily basis. The dark blue, the bottom portion of each bar, is the portion of workers who said they would mostly like to telework. Call your attention to a couple of things for the region as a whole. Forty-eight percent, that first bar, about half of all workers said they would still mostly like to be back in the office, mostly like to be at work. That second group, the eighteen to twenty-nine-year-olds, fifty-eight percent, nearly three out of five younger workers, that young cohort that we continue to track, very, very bright workers to the region, they would largely like to be back in the office. And we can think of a variety of reasons, early stages of your career, but it's also the socialization, the opportunity to meet a potential spouse or partner. So very insightful points and very interesting perspectives when you look at different workers and by their age category. Next slide, please. Companion to this, that post, the Post and the Shaw School Commission, is this snapshot, if you will, from the perspective of movers. The dark blue portion, or the dark blue bars, rather, of each group show the total number of workers in the region based upon their interest, why they chose to move during the last twelve months or so. The yellow shows the workers, or I'm sorry, the houses, rather, who responded purely based on their perspectives or their need, if you will, from the pandemic. So as you look across the groupings of bars, very traditional rationales for crime, safety, education, access to restaurants and so forth. But I would call to your attention those last two sets of bars for more space, where nearly seventy percent of pandemic-related movers said, you know, we just need to move because we need more space and access to the outdoors. I'd contrast that with the set of bars immediate left to it, proximity to extended family, folks who had really been locked up during the pandemic. You know, that really wasn't a priority for them when it came to moving. That was probably not what was the rationale for them wanting to, in fact, to come and move. So, next slide, please. Again, as I said, we work closely with George Mason. This is a slide, actually, the source of which is Alant and Avison Young. This looks at the number of commercial office leases that will be expiring by class type over the next four years. Again, you can see to the right the different array. It is nearly forty-four million square feet of space that is coming online to be leased going forward, or re-let, if you will, these are spaces that are expiring. I think part of the question, and when I share this with other groups, it is the question that Angela alluded to, is what will space utilization be like going forward? Given telework trends, given the proclivity to move to smaller spaces regardless of the size of your workforce. And from a COG perspective, commercial real estate is extremely important from a revenue standpoint. So this is a series of data, a source of information, I think, really bears watching over the next few years, particularly as these, these individual leases, and in aggregate, as they are in fact renewed, and what sort of premiums, what sort of exactions, if you will, come out of any one of those transactions. Next slide, please. Looking forward, COG is spending time looking at a number of different indicators, very much along the lines of what Angela alluded to. I won't go into all the detail here, but we have begun the work to develop our next major series, our next major round of forecasts, if you will. About every five years, we do put our finger to the wind and look at what are the macroeconomic trends that are driving growth going into the future for the next twenty-five years or so. That second set of indicators, if you will, what are the COVID-19 impacts to future growth going to be? I've alluded to several of them. Commercial space utilization and demographic assumptions. Interestingly enough, we've become a tremendously more diverse region of all the wonderful benefits that has brought to the region, and our household size has actually begun to increase slightly. I'll chat about that in just a minute. Next slide, please. Going down very quickly, some of the steps we'll go through, we are currently benchmarking our employment to the year 2020, examining census 2020 trends, how we have matched those estimates with our own projections. So we're developing a new econometric model to really determine what is the baseline, the benchmark forecast for the region. And then we work very closely, as I showed in that schematic, to obtain local forecasts from the member planning departments with their processes, and what are the assumptions that they are using to drive their forecasts. Next slide, please. So very quickly, how we intend to accomplish some of this is we have actually encumbered a consultant through the Transportation Planning Board to look at a couple of key indicators as we in fact develop this vision of our future for the region. The first bullet, we're actually asking that they would help us put their finger on the pulse, look at some of the key drivers, if you will, that might create a range of regional economic forecasts. As I said, we've talked about office demand, changing patterns of job growth by sector, but really to bound the forecast with some confidence of what might an alternative future be that might be slightly higher or slightly lower. The other trends that we're asking them to look at in that second bullet is a couple of things. On the demographic side, as I mentioned, the change in average household size. In the nineteen seventies and nineteen eighties, our average household size plummeted when baby boomers deferred having children. As I mentioned before, we have benefited from tremendous immigration to this region. We continue to attract extremely bright, you're talented workers across the spectrum, and our average household size has begun to increase slightly. Why is that important? At the local level, that factors into things like the need for school, services, hospitals, public safety, and so forth. Talked about office space utilization, but also retail space demand. We all know the impact, how we've become very comfortable with home deliveries from a retail standpoint. There are ITE standards for how many, how much square footage you need for an office worker or for retail space. We believe both of those are changing going forward. And again, that change, the demand based on the number of workers equates to the demand for the space that would be needed to house them for their, for their occupations. And then lastly, that last point, I believe when I came to the commission three years ago, we shared with you our work with the local governments on the need for more housing in the region. We're all aware of how expensive housing has become, the tight markets that we have experienced. Something we are very much interested in, particularly with the advent of broadband, telework policies and so forth. What would the potential spatial impacts be to the timing and location of future housing in the region and beyond? The COG footprint is fairly small, but we do in fact model two, three, four tiers of counties beyond our footprint, and we do already see on, on an occasional basis, commuters from very, very far distances from the COG footprint. Next slide, please. Then lastly, wrapping up, again, adapted from my colleague, Terry Clower, George Mason, these are some of the key points that we have been talking about within the Council of Governments, and in some of the other audiences that I've had the privilege to share this with. Obviously, inflation, interest rates, where are we with the pandemic? That fifth bullet that no one would have possibly anticipated, you know, conflicts domestically but internationally, the impacts of federal spending throughout the region, but across the nation as legislation and spending authorizations move forward. On the right-hand side, these are some of the key drivers that we see that are clearly more locally focused. We've talked for many years at the Council of Governments about our ability to attract and retain the talented workers that we want for the jobs that we are creating. But as you can see there, it is also the challenge that I mentioned before about the need for affordable housing. Again, work from home telework, that does influence both the number of workers as well as their place of residence, and how flexible can we as employers be? Where this is in fact still a bit of an uncertainty going forward. So thank you. Those really are all the comments I have to share. I know if time permits, I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have. Thank you, Angela.
Thank you, Paul. And thank you, Commissioner. This concludes our presentation for today. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Dupont and Mr. DeJardan. It's just fascinating to see this work, and we really appreciate the presentation. Do the commissioners have any questions?
I do.
Okay, Commissioner Wright.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Um, one, well, it starts with a comment which explains my question. Well, I don't know. Anyway, there's a couple of things that I'm, you say that the audience for this thing is, includes, well, I, does, the, does, is it, and is it, is it a given that the audience for this will be, or the federal landholding agencies, and that's why you don't mention them? Because you say this is for regional planners, and I'm assuming since it's the Federal Planning Agency that you're, you're including the landholding agencies as your target audience, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So, and, and they will also, I assume, inform your, I mean, I'm assuming that you're gonna, this won't be like a spreadsheet exercise. You're gonna be interviewing people and getting their take on, on, on the ground, you know, as they engage in portfolio planning. Right? Yes?
That's, that's correct. It'll be critical for us to work closely with GSA, DOD, other federal agencies with large campuses. And we're gonna have these facilitated stakeholder discussions. So there's gonna be a lot more discussion, not just a spreadsheet.
Yeah, okay. So, so if, so that brings me to my third question, and then I'll just roll right into a comment since they're connected. The, are you going, you say, so you're gonna, I assume, have a, you're gonna contract, you're gonna have a contractor who's gonna be kind of running the show? Process-wise?
We are still gonna be working through COG with the proposal to see what pieces we may need a contractor for some of the targeted research, but that's still to be determined.
Yeah, so here's what I'm getting at. You're gonna talk to a lot of people who are either SES, or they're, they're gonna, or maybe even Schedule C people, who are not going to want to admit that they don't really know. So I would urge, they don't know what's gonna happen. We all, I mean, people who are honest don't know, and, and, but you're gonna need to give them a safe space to, to, to feel like they're talking to you in, with, you're gonna have to extend some confidentiality if you wanna get legit data. Because nobody wants to say, well, shoot, we're putting together our budget ask, and we don't really know. And, and, and so if you get a whole lot of, you're gonna get a lot of bravado. And that's not very useful for this assignment. So I would really spend some time thinking through how you're gonna offer how you're gonna create trust with the people that you interview and guarantee a certain amount of confidentiality so that the, the integrity of the data you do collect is reliable.
That's very helpful. Thank you so much. And we'll definitely do that. And just note, you know, I think we have an understanding that we may not be able to predict what all agencies are going to be deciding in the near and long term. But part of the scenario planning work is to identify potential scenarios that could happen and what some of those implications could be if, if we were to see federal agencies move that direction.
And, and one more thing, you might, you might consider extending this out a little bit and not necessarily make, putting a lot of pressure on yourselves to produce. And here's why, because people are starting to go back and, and it's going to be, God, at least six months before what, what we're, what we're doing, what we're saying to ourselves is we, like everything, form follows, in good design, form follows function. And in this case, function is employee behavior. And, and people's experiences as they go back over just the next few months over. And, and because we're, it's springtime, we're, we're gonna be, and then there's summer vacations and all that. Reliable, you won't be able to have a real picture of employee behavior, the driver. I mean, the employees, the workforce is in the driver's seat now. And, and I would just urge that you give it more than, 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 than a glimpse. And I think it's going to take a minimum of six months for behavior patterns to start stabilizing at, at least, and possibly into next year as people kind of search for their groove. And, and certainly for the people who have kids, the summer will be again, an anomalous data set because kids aren't in school and that tends to kind of make things a little bit less typical. Okay, I'll shut up now.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Kozart.
So thank you for this presentation. Definitely thank you, Paul, for that great information. And I think it helps to contextualize the study and very excited to work with you all on this analysis. You know, as you can imagine, the district has a vested interest as it relates to this, especially underscoring, you know, our support for the 6040 policy. And I think that this analysis is going to help us understand kind of the new world with, that we're in and what that means for that policy. And I, I would say, just as background, as part of our work to update the comp plan, we looked at this and had conversations with NCPC about it and found that on, you know, as it relates to supply, there's lots of places where we're making investments underway now and planned investments in places that are going to be great locations for federal facilities. And we want to maintain that commitment. So we're really excited about this proposed analysis, excited that it's happening, thinking, things, thinking that these are the right partners and stand ready to talk about sites and supply to the extent that that's helpful for this. And really interested in finding ways to support federal agencies in their location decisions in the district and supporting kind of the needs and recognizing the timelines and understanding that we're in this place, as Commissioner Wright said, of unpredictability. And interested to, to learn from that and, and figure out how we can be supportive as a municipality. So thank you so much, excited for the invitation to, to engage this way and looking forward.
Thank you. I'd like to open it up now to the commission for discussion. So I'd ask everyone to turn on their cameras. And I'll do this again in round robin format. I don't want to miss anyone. And I was gonna start with Commissioner Wright. So I just want to check in any further comments, Commissioner Wright, for discussion?
No, I kind of got it all, all done at once.
Thank you and very thoughtful, as always. Commissioner Dixon.
Yeah, I'd like to just thank you for the presentation and associate myself with Commissioner Wright's comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash.
I'll also just echo some, some of Commissioner Wright's comments. I know that here on the council, we're going through the budget process right now where we bring in each agency and the council asks them, do you have what you need? And of course, the answer is, oh, the mayor's budget is the perfect thing. We don't need anything else. So I think there's, if you're gonna look at it, at this issue that I think is very complex, I think that, that kind of that confidentiality, making sure that you're getting an unvarnished opinion is, is the way to go. Because otherwise, I think that agency agendas could come into play. But I think that there, there's a lot of usefulness in looking at this.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
Thanks very much for the presentation. It was really informative, really appreciate hearing more perspectives about what workers are looking for in the future of work and the future of federal property. We'll be sure to, to continue to follow up, looking into this and appreciate the presentation.
Thank you. Commissioner Kozart, any further comments you'd like to share?
No, not at this time. And as a matter of protocol, I'm gonna figure out the difference between a question and a comment between now and our next meeting. Thank you.
Oh, not, not a problem at all. It's just good to get questions out and it might reflect on when you want to make a comment later. So it's a, it's all very helpful, however you want to do it. Commissioner McMahon.
Hey, thanks. Great presentation, great comments. Something I would add as we look at this thing, and obviously part of the discussion kind of hinted at will be this, how each agency is looking at the distinction between leased facilities and owned facilities and land and how that impacts their plans. Certainly, Paul, your, your survey about various age groups and where they want to be working in the future, is probably something that maybe wasn't obvious to a lot of us until you put that slide up there. And so certainly, I think, part of your conversation as you go around is not just talk to all of us planners and facility managers, but try and reach out to some of the human capital leaders in each agency. Because a large part of this is going to be how they are driving to follow OPM guidance and the President's guidance, especially for federal agencies, new telework policies and how they're handling that and how they are leading their workforces to, to make that happen. I think there'll be a lot of people, I mean, DOD, when I take this slide back, that, that slide you presented about the 48%, you know, of, of people wanting to come back to work is going to be a bit of surprise based on some of the things we're seeing. So I'm, I'm looking forward to participating in, and working on this project over the next year or two. The other part, and we hit this thing, is whatever solution we come up with, as we look at those facility solutions, I think we all understand that implementing those solutions is not a very quick process. It just takes time, even with funding, to actually implement the changes we need to make at facilities to accommodate this new workforce. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner May.
Thank you. I don't think I have much to add. I appreciate the comments that have already been made, including Commissioner Wright in particular. Yeah, I mean, I, it's, it's hard to, it's just so hard to understand how you can navigate this. It's like, it's a, it's a ship navigating a fog or, I don't know. It's, if you're a sci-fi person, it's like ingesting the spice so you know how to navigate through interstellar space. I don't know. It's, it, it is a, it's a challenging undertaking. And I appreciate all, all that you're trying to do. It is just so hard. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo.
Mike, yeah, I had just a couple of things. The, I think it was slide 27, I, I was, and, and you don't even have to go back and look at it now. But I was curious that there wasn't an element to deal with, put commuting and transportation in that slide. That was one comment. And in some of the forecasting models is, and, and this may sound naive, but how, you know, what? It's about forecasting something like COVID. And, you know, the, the, the nature of the kind of something most of us have never been through. But now that we've been through and we know the, the little bit that we know about the potential for pandemic and worldwide pandemic, as well as potentially regional pandemic. It's, to me, it's, it's, it's own independent scenario that is not in the realm of the impossible and has different elements to it than some of the other ones that were included in the presentation. So that's my comment.
That is a very provocative thought to leave us on, Commissioner Argo, and, and think about how do we consider this and what the options are. And this is, this is such a thoughtful group. I'm, I'm excited that we're working with the Council of Governments on this scenario planning. I think all of us are trying to figure it out as we go. I particularly appreciated Commissioner McMahon's comment about working with the human capital leaders in these agencies and what they're hearing from their employees and what they want and how they make their decisions. So it was really such a thoughtful presentation. And, you know, clearly the federal workforce plays such an important role in our region's economy and the federal workplaces shape development and transportation patterns. So this is an incredibly timely briefing. And look forward to additional information as, as Washington and so many other regions recover and respond to, you know, post pandemic. But as Commissioner Argo reminds us, it could easily happen again. And we just have to keep that in our thoughts to, to be flexible. So with that, are there any other further comments or questions about this agenda item? If, if not, thank you again for such a compelling presentation. And this really concludes our open session agenda. Our next regular meeting will be on Thursday, May 5th, 2022 at 1:00 PM. And if there's no other business, this session is now adjourned. Thank you all very much.